I call the meeting to order. Good evening and welcome to the February 20th, 2024 official business meeting of your Ashland City Council. We will have the land acknowledgement offered by Councilor Bloom.
Thank you. We acknowledge and honor the Aboriginal people on whose ancestral homelands we work, the Kierkutzen Band of the Shasta Nation, as well as the diverse and vibrant native communities who make their home here today. We honor the first stewards of the Rogue Valley and the lands we love and depend on. Tribes with ancestral lands in and surrounding the geography of the Ashland watershed include the original past, present, and future indigenous inhabitants of the Shasta, Takama, and Athabaskan people. We also recognize and acknowledge the Shasta village of Kwakwaka, where the crow lights that is now the Ashland City Plaza.
Thank you, and Councilor Dale will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and consider it a right for which it stands, one nation under our law, individual for liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Alyssa.
Hanson.
Here.
Duquesne.
Here.
Kaplan.
Here.
Graham.
Here.
Dahl.
Here.
Bloom.
Here.
Hyatt.
Here.
Thank you. We have two proclamations this evening. The first is a proclamation in honor of the 150-year anniversary of the Ashland Police Department. Whereas the Ashland Police Department was founded in 1874, and whereas over the last 150 years, hundreds of men and women have worked toward ensuring public safety of this community, and whereas the Ashland Police Department has developed into a progressive professional police organization, pioneering special programs and striving for the highest standards of customer service, and whereas the Ashland Police Department prides itself on partnering with the community to promote public safety while building mutual trust and inclusiveness, and whereas the Ashland Police Department serves the community employing fairness, integrity, and respect for all, and whereas the police officer's badge is recognized as a symbol of the authority granted to the officer by the community. Now therefore, I, Tanya Graham, on behalf of the City of Ashland, do hereby proclaim 2024 as the 150th anniversary of the founding of the Ashland Police Department, and on behalf of the council and community, thank all members of the Ashland Police Department, past and present, for their dedicated service and support the current officers in wearing commemorative 150th anniversary badges throughout the year. In Ashland, we are better together. The second proclamation is a proclamation in honor of Black History Month 2024. Whereas Black History Month, first proposed by scholar Carter G. Wilson in 1926, seeks to rightfully center the role of Black Americans in our national narrative, and whereas this year's theme, Black Americans and the Arts, celebrates the profound and evolving impact of Black artistry on our cultural, natural identity, and social movements that have spanned the world over. Through literature, music, architecture, dance, film, and every conceivable medium in between, Black artists and intellectuals have used their talents to honor their heritage, educate, and inspire, and open minds and hearts. Whereas Black Art has been a powerful agent of change and social uplift throughout our nation's history, many and varied forms of creative expression have had a pivotal role in opening new dialogues, challenging us to examine hard truths, and inspiring us to work towards something better. During Black History Month, let us draw inspiration from this legacy as we continue together on the path toward equality, liberty, and opportunity for all. Our shared history shows us that we rise and fall together, an enduring lesson reflected in the words of Dr. Maya Angelou, "The truth is no one of us can be free until everybody is free." Now therefore, I, Tanya Graham, Mayor of the City of Ashland, Oregon, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim the month of February 2024 as Black History Month, and call upon the people of Ashland to observe this month with appropriate reflection and learning, and to continue our efforts to create a more just and equitable community. In Ashland, we are better together. And I will hand it over now to Councilor Duquesne, who has some comments.
Thank you, Mayor. As we all know, Black History is American history. And in the spirit of Art and Black History Month, I would just like to let the community know that Micah Blacklight's sculpture is being funded, and we still have a ways to go, but the sculpture's ancestors' future crystallizes our call. So I just wanted to put that out there, that it's there, it's being funded, we still need help. So if you can dig deep, we'd appreciate that, and that would go to say their names. Thank you so much, and happy Black History Month, American History Month.
Thank you, Councilor. A couple of other announcements. The If I Were Mayor contest is underway. The deadline is February 8th. If you know a young person between the third grade and seniors in high school who are interested in civics and would like to join the contest, please refer them to our website, where the details are located. We will be picking one elementary age, one middle school age, and one high school age winner here in Ashland, and we will send them up to the state contest. So please let any young people in your life know about this contest. And I also wanted to remind everyone that there's a communication survey online at the city. We are looking for your guidance in terms of how you would like to know about what's happening at the city. So please go online and fill that out. The deadline is March 1st, I believe, right? Sabrina? Yes, by March 1st. And finally, if you are new to these chambers and you would like to speak to us this evening, the way that you do that is by taking one of those forums in the back corner, the yellow forums, and filling that out for us. You'll want to make sure that you are identifying what you're here to speak to us about. Public forum is for anything that is not on the agenda. And then if you're here to speak to something that is on the agenda, please make sure that you write that down for us, and that helps us bring you up at the right time to speak to the council. And with that, we will move on to approval of minutes. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Councilor Dale.
Thank you, Mayor. On the February 6th council meeting, on Section 5, Approval of the Minutes, January 16th, it states that Councilor Hyatt and myself moved in second to approve minutes. It was someone else because I was not in attendance at that meeting, and also down in Section 9, under Unfinished Business, I'm listed as one of the roll call votes, and I still was not present at said same meeting. Thank you.
Any other corrections? Councilor Duquesne.
Thank you, Mayor. Looking at study session for February 5th, page 6, on the final paragraph, it says, "We were discussing the shelter and when we would review that again." And it says, "Graham responded that staff would bring the suggestion back at a later date." That later date was in April, and we did say April at the meeting. So I wanted the minutes to reflect when we have that discussion, that recap of the winter shelter, that would be in April. That is the later date we discussed.
Any other corrections? The floor is open for a motion to accept the corrected minutes. Councilor Jensen.
Thanks, Mayor. I'd like to move approval of February 5th and February 6th study session and business meeting minutes with noted changes.
Roll call, please. Sorry. Hyatt?
Yes.
Bloom?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Kaplan?
Yes.
Duquesne?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Thank you. We have our Fire Life Saving Award. If Chief Sartain will come up.
Mayor, Council, City Manager, and viewing members of our community, Ralph Sartain, Fire Chief for Ashland Fire and Rescue. Thank you, Mayor. It is with great pleasure as the Fire Chief that I'm here tonight to acknowledge the extreme efforts of three of our members, as well as the unit, that supported their efforts to save one of our citizens. It's something that all firefighters long to do, without actually saying we long to do it, because we want to save our community the best way we can, and most of the time we don't get that pleasure of actually saving someone out of the fire. And so with that, I'd like to read the information for this award. "On April 3rd, 2023, at 8:34, shortly after completing a study session with you, with the need of additional staffing of Ashland Fire and Rescue, a fire broke out on B Street in Ashland. Ashland Fire and Rescue and Jackson County Fire District 5 dispatched to B Street the resident who initially was a confirmed trapped victim. The fire originated in the victim's residence. She initially vacated the residence and realized her cats had not made it out. The fire victim then re-entered the structure and became trapped by smoke and flames. Engine 1, with retired Captain Beck, Engineer Caples, firefighter Haggard, and recruit probationary firefighter Hanson, and Medic 1, with firefighter Brown and firefighter Stewart, arrived on scene at 20:38 hours. They advised of smoke showing with the victim trapped in the residence. Captain Beck and firefighter Haggard advanced across late to the door. Captain Beck conducted a quick 360 while firefighter Haggard could hear a victim calling for help from in the residence. Firefighter Haggard advanced into the structure and cooled the content fire while moving towards the noise of the victim in a search mode. Firefighter Haggard located the victim in the bathroom of the primary fire room. Captain Beck and firefighter Brown entered the structure immediately following firefighter Haggard and assisted in removing the victim to the front door. Engineer Caples supplied the water source while recruit probationary firefighter Hanson had advanced a hose line, a large diameter hose, to a fire hydrant to provide continual water for the firefight. Firefighter Stewart met the interior crew with a backboard at the front door of the residence to receive the patient from the interior crew. The second arriving units with Engine 2, Captain Roslip, and Engineer Meckers, with Jackson County Fire District 5 Truck 5 Captain Dave Meads, Engineer Brady Graham, firefighters Tony Insarity, and Caleb English entered the structure to suppress the fire. From the call's time to the victim's removal was 9 minutes and 33 seconds. From Engine 1 on scene to rescue was 5 minutes and 2 seconds. Firefighter Brown and recruit probationary firefighter Hanson maintained care of the patient and transported her to Assante Rogue Regional Medical Center with firefighter Stewart driving, while the victim was ultimately transferred to Emmanuel Burn Center in Portland. While tonight, we are focusing on the actions of Captain Beck, firefighter Haggard, and Brown, which are exemplary motive of fire service, their actions directly saved the life of a trapped fire victim while entering an immediately dangerous-to-life-and-health atmosphere at their own risk. The action by all involved in this incident was extreme service to this community, and based on these actions, all involved that night have been submitted from initial arrival, treatment, transport, suppression, command and control, investigation, and continued PIO work through the case that investigation made this a successful event. And with that, we've nominated this entire group for an Oregon State Unit Citation. The members for that incident from Jackson County Fire District 5 were Battalion Chief Brian Bolstad, Truck 5 Captain Dave Meads, Engineer Brady Graham, firefighters Tony Insarity, and Caleb English, and Engine 3 Captain Jimmy Johnson, Engineer Matt Lichtenstein, and firefighter Kyle Humphrey. From Ashland Fire and Rescue, in attendance tonight was Battalion Chief Todd Stubbs, Engine 1 Captain Todd Beck, Engineer Daniel Caples, who is not here tonight, firefighter Haggard, and recruit probationary firefighters Zach Hanson, who is not here tonight, Medic 1 firefighter Matt Brown, and Matt Stewart, who are both here tonight. Engine 2 Captain Dave Roslip, and Engineer Mike Meckers, who are present. Support 1 is our Fire and Life Safety Specialist of Sidney Jenkins. Chief 101 was our Forestry Officer and PIO Chris Chambers, and Deputy Chief of Operations Marshall Razor. So with that, Mayor, I'd like to call forward our three recipients.
Thank you.
All right, Todd. Matt?
As they're coming up, I think between the proclamation for our police department and these awards this evening, what it reminds us of is that we have this incredible process and these teams in our city that allow the rest of us to go away from an emergency because you all are running towards it. And we sometimes, I think, you do such a good job that we can sometimes forget the importance of what that means. So I'm so glad the person survived that evening and was able to be rescued, and so pleased to be able to be part of this this evening. So I will bring the awards, and then councilors, after the chief awards them, if we would all come around for a photo. And now we have the City Manager's report.
My only function is the photographer tonight. So just a reminder, our telecom comment period is up on our website, so if you'd like to make a comment on the telecom ordinance, that is available to you. We are launching our citizen self-service portal for our planning, building, and public works permits. You can also find more information about that online. And then Community Connect has been rolled out, so if you are a community member, we would love for you to go to our website and follow the link to put your information in there to help our firefighters better assist us in times of emergency. Thank you.
Great. Did we also, did you want to make an announcement of the new portal?
The self-service portal? So the citizen self-service portal is for planning, building, and public works. So if you're interested in doing your permit through that, that is available and on our website.
And we just released it last week, I think, so.
Correct.
Decided to see how that works. Great. We will move on now to public forum. I have about 10 people who have signed up. Generally, we set aside about 15 minutes for this, so every person will have two minutes. The way that this works is that Alyssa will give you a signal. She'll give you a single chime when you have 20 seconds left, and she'll give you a double chime when your time is up. And at that point, please finish your sentence and then move on so that the next person can come and address the council. The first speaker is Sitka Moss, and then Ryan Navikas. And if you can please say your name and what city you live in, that would be great. And they will be followed by Allison Post and Amanda Morehouse.
Sitka Moss, and I live in Shadicoe. Article 2 of the Convention on the Prevention and Punishment of the Crime of Genocide of 1948 defines genocide as, quote, "Any of the following acts committed with intent to destroy in whole or in part a national, ethnical, racial, or religious group to bring about its physical destruction in whole or in part." We are all familiar with at least two genocides in history, one being when the Europeans came to this land we stand and sit on tonight and brutally murdered 90% of the indigenous peoples who have been living here for time immemorial, colonizing this land into what is now known as the United States of America, the one you acknowledge at the beginning of every council meeting. The second, more recent one, being the Holocaust, where the Nazis, led by Hitler and his allied governments, killed 6 million Jewish people, the one that you all spoke to when calling for Ashland to be a place where Jews feel welcome in creating the anti-Semitism proclamation of February last year. On June 20th, Ashland City Council also spoke up for a war-torn city unanimously approving its sister-city relationship with one in Ukraine. This relationship will support humanitarian aid and fundraising efforts within the Ashland community. So you do speak on international issues, and we're asking that you do it for the people of Palestine. We are here because of a genocide. Israel is eradicating the Palestinian people from occupied Palestine. How do you not see that? This genocide has been going on since October 7th of last year, one that has been unfolding in real time on our phones for the last 130-plus days, where almost 30,000 known people have been identified dead, and 12,000 of them are children. We are watching this happen in a way we have never been able to see in the past. Every day on social media, hundreds of videos get uploaded of the suffering, death, and destruction happening in Gaza. Have you all looked at these videos yet? Because I promise you, once you see them, you cannot unsee it. Forever, the images of dead children, crushed bodies, and wailing mothers will be etched into my memory.
Ryan Navikas, I live in Medford. Once you see this, you will understand our persistence, our grief, and our outrage, and our leaders for not standing up for human life. Just yesterday, the United Nations voted again on a ceasefire. Out of 194 countries in the U.N., 192 of them voted for a ceasefire. 192. The United States vetoed the ruling, and the U.K. abstained from voting. The entire world is calling for a ceasefire, but people are not listening. It's time to join their voices and stand on the right side of history. We're here to ask you to reconsider your stance to submit a ceasefire letter. We're also here to ask you to take another step, which is to join over 50 cities in supporting a full ceasefire resolution, a draft of which we've brought for your consideration. You say this issue is complex, but it is not. The first bloody push Israel made into Palestine was in 1948, known as the Nakba, where Zionist military forces expelled at least 750,000 Palestinians from their homes and lands and stole 78% of historic Palestine. The remaining 22% was divided up into what are now the occupied West Bank and the besieged Gaza Strip. During the Nakba, Zionist military forces attacked major Palestinian cities and destroyed some 530 villages and towns. About 15,000 Palestinians were killed in a series of massacres. But they didn't stop there. Israel has kept their hand pressed on Palestinians since then. They've outlawed their flag, their culture, they've continued to murder, arrest, and displace the Palestinian peoples for just existing in their homes, on their lands, with their families. They've killed and displaced entire families between 1948 until now.
Allison Post and Amanda Morehouse, followed by Andrew Blanchflower and Kayla Blanchflower.
My name is Allison Post. I'm a resident of Ashland. The escalation of indiscriminate violence against innocent civilians is what we are asking for you to speak to. It must stop now. As we speak, 1.4 million displaced Gazans are trapped in the southernmost tip of the Gaza Strip in Rafah, with nowhere to go, and the bombs are now dropping on their tents. Israel is blocking lifesaving aid for the civilians who have lost everything. They do not have enough food or water. People are starving. Diabetics don't have insulin. Cancer patients don't have their treatments. Ailments that are normally treatable are causing extreme pain and sometimes death because there is no medicine, no functioning hospitals. Children are being stitched up and amputated with no anesthetics. Infection and disease is rampant with the lack of antibiotics and other medication. Bathroom and hygiene stations are far and few between. This was in Rafah. This was considered the last safe zone for residents of Gaza. Rafah borders Egypt, and there is nowhere else south for them to go but the Sinai Desert. As of February 12th, Israel has begun indiscriminately bombing people living in tent cities in Rafah, again with no place to go. People are trapped and terrified. Israel sent a drone, saying they must evacuate the hospital in Rafah immediately, and then the civilians trying to evacuate were gunned down by a drone with two machine guns attached to it. How many more lives need to be destroyed before we all speak up, before you are willing to speak up? Because silence becomes complicity. Thanks so much.
My name is Amanda Morehouse. I live in Central Point. Gaza has 20,000 children who have recently been orphaned due to losing their entire families to the bombings and attacks. In addition to lives lost and displaced families, over 300,000 families don't have a home to return to when the bombing stops, because that's how many homes have been destroyed or heavily damaged since October 7th. That is the equivalent, well, more than, if every home in Josephine, Jackson, Clamath, Douglas, Curry, and Coos County combined, if all of those housing units in all those counties were destroyed or damaged, not to mention 379 schools that have been destroyed along with over 500 mosques and 200 heritage sites. What was left of their country is all but leveled, and Israel is now drawing up blueprints to build condos on the beaches soaked with the blood of the Palestinian people they slaughtered. We are here to ask that you sign both a letter for a ceasefire as well as adopt a resolution for ceasefire, because it is the humane thing to do, because the time to act is now. What will you tell your grandchildren? What will you tell people 10 years from now that you did when this was happening? You are our appointed local government. You have a duty to hear our voices and make statements on our behalf, especially when we've been trying for months now and nobody's listening to us. This is not an issue to leave in the hands of the federal government alone. Everyone and every level of government should feel a moral obligation to uphold the human right to live, to be alive, around the world, not just in our communities. Injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. And as you guys said at the beginning of this meeting, none of us are free until all of us are free.
Andrew Blanchflower, followed by Kayla Blanchflower, Sally Mix, and Gary Schaaf.
My name is Andrew Blanchflower. I'm a resident in Jackson County. Thanks for the acknowledgement that you made earlier. I come here with grave concern for what is probably the greatest crime of our time that's unfolding right now. I'm another voice to speak for the Palestinian people. I came here to ask you, the governmental representatives of the city in which I work and live, to publicly and officially vehemently denounce the extreme right-wing government of the State of Israel for its genocidal actions against the beloved people of Palestine. Since the ICJ ruling in favor of South Africa's case against Israel, meaning they are on trial for genocide, they have done nothing to protect the unarmed civilians of beloved Palestine. Instead, they have doubled down. We are paying for it with our tax dollars to the tune of over $300,000 a year, money that could be spent on the community here. This is why it's a local issue. It's not the only reason why, but that's not the only reason. I'm a father of six and recently became a grandfather of a baby less than two weeks ago. I see on my social media feeds images of children who could be mine, from dead newborns with horrific wounds to teenagers, some kids who've been sniped, shot in the head. A girl carried from an ambulance with her feet and face melted off from white phosphorus burns, an illegal weapon to use in civilian areas. The only place in the world that makes white phosphorus is in Arkansas in the USA. To witness these horrors and do nothing destroys our humanity. It is human to want to help someone in pain, suffering, and agony. To witness these horrors and stand up against it restores our humanity. Article 33 of the Geneva Convention says that an occupying force does not actually have the right to defend itself against the people it is occupying, as opposed to an occupied people do have the right to resist occupation. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. My name is Kayla Blanchflower, and I'm a resident of Ashland for over 20 years now. I'm here tonight to also speak on the matter of Gaza and to thank you, Tanya, for your efforts in writing your recent letter. And I'm not one to shame people, and I feel like shame on the rest of the council for not having joined in that letter. However, I did learn that Dylan Bloom However, I did learn that Dylan Bloom, I've heard through the grapevine, was sorry to have missed the meeting and is supportive of the letter. And so I thank you for that, and thank you for the land acknowledgement earlier. It means a good bit. So here's the thing, every time I open my phone, I don't know if it happens when you open your phone, but I see another genocidal image, another image of a burnt child or a young bloody body hanging on a wall or trapped under concrete, or a father. Those are the ones that really get me. The fathers weeping over pale, dead babies in their arms, or a child shaking and in utter shock with their eyes swollen and limbs missing, blood running down their face, other children grinding animal feed into flour to stave off the intense hunger, crowds of children with empty containers, hungry bellies, thirsty bodies, fighting infections, losing limbs, with not a mother or a father to even hold them anymore. I'll keep coming here to speak of these horrors. You'll get to know me, I guess, until I feel like Ashland has done something, because here's the thing. I learned that Ashland actually gives over $360,000 to Israel to keep that war machine going. That money can be used in ways to benefit our local community, and this is how it is a local issue, right? All those people on the lawn outside. It can go to schools and housing. It can build sustainable infrastructure, and you know that. You know what we could do with over $360,000 a year. The USA is absolutely complicit in the catastrophe that's taking place. Let's follow Jeff Merkley and his call for a ceasefire and his new Operation Gaza rescue. It's incredible. Let's follow his lead. I'm asking you tonight to draft a resolution, follow many other American cities, and let's stop funding this war machine. I've left a resolution here with you tonight to please look over. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Sally Mix and Gary Schaaf.
I am from Ashland. Since World War II, the United States has given $318 billion to Israel. The massive displacement and killing of the Palestinian people are because the U.S. government has given them the money to do it. Not only has the U.S. government done nothing to stop the genocide, they have increased funding to Israel in their reign of terror. On October 20th, shortly after the genocide began, Biden requested $14.3 billion in aid, and again on November 2nd, $14.5 billion in aid. This plan, which was funded by cuts to our own government aid, cuts to the care of our own people. Right now, as we speak, Biden has a new bill introduced and passed through the Senate last week that gives Israel $14.1 billion in cuts, all funded to the UNRWA, an aid organization that helps the Palestinian people. Established in the Leahy Law, the United States cannot provide security assistance to foreign governments that commit gross human rights violations. But as we are seeing it with the last five months, the United States cannot even follow its own laws. I am here to urge you to band together as local government and call for a ceasefire and put forth a resolution, because our tax dollars, yours, mine, or your community, are being used to commit war crimes and continue the genocide of the people of Palestine. And I also wanted to let you know that my sisters in Africa and Europe and here in America are with me. Many of my old friends are with me on this. Thank you. Waduh.
Thank you.
Excuse me. Was the handout distributed to the council? Would you please do that? The, I'm a little bit taken aback by following all the speakers dealing with the crisis that we face internationally, but we face a crisis here at home, and it's housing affordability and housing shortage. And while the legislature is considering authorizing a urban growth boundary amendment to address that problem here in Ashland, that is largely irrelevant, if not laughable. According to the Ashland Housing Capacity Analysis, we have roughly 2,764 buildable acres of land that's available for accommodate our future growth. Based upon the housing analysis, we only need 643 of those acres. Roughly, we have four times what we need within the urban growth boundary to accommodate the housing that we'll need between now and 2040. So the legislature is largely missing our needs, or at least not addressing them. What I'd like to focus on, though, is something that you can address, which is affordability, and that's through ensuring that people have a choice in the way they travel around town. At present, we're ostensibly, with maybe the notable exception of Councilor Kaplan, dependent upon automobiles to do most everything we do in town. The graphic that I showed on the bottom half of the page illustrates the difference in cost for households that don't own a vehicle versus those that do. And particularly, I'd like to point out the top-right line, which is the lowest quartile of households and the cost, the percent that they spend on housing. We can change that by changing our transportation and land use system. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We now move on to the consent agenda. Are there any requests to remove any items from the consent agenda? Okay. The floor is open for a motion to approve the consent agenda. Counselor Hyatt?
I move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
A second.
Rule call, please. Bloom?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Kaplan?
Yes.
Duquesne?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Hyatt?
Yes.
Thank you. And we are now at public hearings. We have the first reading of ordinance 3230, amending the procurement and contract procedures.
Good evening, counsel. Oh, okay. And mayor, give me a minute as I prepare. So we are here to review purchasing and contract for the city of Ashland. The core of the Ashland Procurement Code was written back in 2000. There were revisions along the way, with the bulk of them happening in 2010, over 13 years ago. I want to share that our procurement team over the years has truly represented Ashland well. Today, however, it is time to look at updating and clarifying the AMC to the Oregon statutes and implementing best practices. As a reference point, the ORS, which our current AMC only partially refers to, is updated and published every two years. So, before you this evening is the first reading of the revised Ashland Procurement Code, and I will walk you through a background of it and the impact to city operations. Public procurement law is dense. It encompasses three very detailed chapters in the ORS and the model rules. The state recognizes that procurement law has the right to have the right balance between having efficient operations and also complying with fair and competitive practices for procuring goods and services. That is why the ORS is updated every couple of years and has raised procurement thresholds multiple times, more recently January 1st, 2024. As a reference point, our AMC small procurement threshold is currently 400% below the state's level, which has caused substantial inefficiencies, increased costs, and has inhibited us from being more agile and strategic. It's looking fine on the screen. Sorry about that. Okay. So, to understand public procurement, one must understand the two main components of it: formal solicitation requirements and purchasing authority. Formal solicitation exists to ensure competition and obtaining the best combination of quality and cost. Methods of formal solicitations are RFPs, RFIs, and invitations to bid. Small procurements don't need any solicitations at all, but of course, they still go through an internal approval process. Intermediate procurements only require informal quotes. Everything else requires formal solicitation. After that, authority level is determined. The local contract board, U, is the city council and has general overall authority. Council delegates thresholds to the city manager, who delegates appropriate levels to the department heads. As a review, while the city council has oversight over contracts above a certain threshold, it cannot unauthorize already appropriate expenditures that have already been approved during the budget process. When a contract comes to you, you are essentially approving the process by which we are procuring and contracting under this applicable law. Before we get into the meat of the AMC revisions, I'd like to review the purpose of public procurement law as defined by the Government Finance Officers Association, or GFOA. It is not simply to obtain the lowest price. GFOA states a number of core objectives for public procurement, which include compliance with state laws, operational continuity, promoting fair and open competition, and ensuring public funds are stewarded. Essentially, GFOA recognizes that effective procurement practices require striking the right balance. Procurement must be a trusted partner across the organization and rule enforcer. Similar to finance's role of being a strategic partner with the entire organization, procurement must also be both role enforcer and a good faith advocate for department's goals and In a recent multiple-day procurement training I attended, the GFOA and the NIGP Institute for Government Procurement reflected the maturity of a procurement department in an organization. On the left side of this slide is a more ad hoc reactionary version of procurement. All the way to the right of the scale is a more strategic and professional procurement department that integrates sound policy with tactical and innovative initiatives. Ashland is somewhere in between. When thresholds and processes weigh down the organization, there is little room to be strategic. With the updating of the AMC, we can begin the work to move towards a more integrative procurement organization, and we already have taken impressive steps to automate the So, to start summarizing the AMC revision, it is, at its core, aligning itself to the ORS and model rules. So when state laws change, we change with it. We recognize that the state has a good pulse on economic indicators and updates the statutes accordingly, and more importantly, timely. We can then focus on automating our back office procedures using technology to improve efficiencies across departments, and equally important, embed the controls into the system rather than having to revisit it by rereading code at every contract or situation. So, I do want to just rephrase that. Oftentimes, we have to reread code over and over again at each contract or situation, and focusing on embedding the controls into the system is going to really help improve the overall mechanism of procurement. So the primary differences in the revised AMC is that we added an ethics section, matched state procurement thresholds, we removed process redundancies and inconsistent language, and we added some legal clarification around contract templates. A quick note on process. The post-pandemic brought many new circumstances that many cities had to navigate, such as supply chain constraints, which pushed delivery times beyond the budget period, inflationary pressures that drove costs up, and challenges finding suitable or even available equipment for essential operational needs. An example was a fire truck that could not be ordered in the normal process of procurement. This truck was in our equipment replacement fund, so it was already approved as part of the budget. However, there was no purchase contract to execute or bring forward, and the truck would not be built out or delivered until after the biennium, 2025. Through an intent to purchase, we could potentially have saved $600,000 in replacement cost. Under the AMC revision, since this had already been approved under the budget process and is also in our equipment replacement fund, we would be able to clearly strategically take advantage of these cost savings while also staying within the state and city procurement laws. This actually happened again today, and potentially missing out on another purchase of a fleet vehicle for a police department because of the timing issue. So finally, I will end on this page that summarizes, oops, I'm sorry, that summarizes what updating the code in our workflow will do. We recommend council approve the first reading of this ordinance and move it to the second reading. I also want to make sure I thank Public Works Director Scott Flurry, procurement consultant Jody Fulton, legal team Doug McGarry and Carmel Zarron for assisting in releasing this ordinance. And I look to Sabrina to add anything, if you might have any few words on this that I missed.
So, I just want to say this has been about two years in the making, so I want to thank Mary Ann for making my dreams come true. This has been on the list since I arrived, and I think I have been very impressed by the work of the finance team to put into action a lot of efficiencies when it comes to purchasing things, which is going to save a lot of staff time and a lot of money potentially with resources. So, I want to give them a big thank you for that.
Questions? All right. The floor is open for a motion. Counselor Bloom?
Thank you. I move to approve the first reading of the amended Ashland Municipal Chapter 2.50 procurement procedures and move forward with the second reading.
I'll second. Would you care to speak to your motion, Counselor Bloom?
No. Impressive presentation and glad we're moving forward. Efficiency is always really good. I think a lot of people talk about government waste, but this is a way we can cut back on that, so, thank you.
Counselor Hyatt?
I would like to thank the team, because I know, Mary Ann, you and Scott came to council in a study session, described what this change in policy could mean for our team, and also what it could mean in terms of cost savings of labor and missed opportunity for cost savings within the process itself. And you have delivered. You have set up a resolution that marks itself to AMC 2.50, making it dynamic with the ORS chapter. So if the ORS chapter changes, we move with it. We are not caught on the back foot, and I think that is really good forethought and planning. It speaks to our values of remaining nimble, yet ensuring proper controls, leveraging online tools, appreciated and overdue, goes right to the heart of synergy.
A couple of things I wanted to thank you for revision and saying where it was revised, so I wouldn't have to dig through it, number one, thank you. And number two, I appreciate anything that makes it streamlined and keeps everyone efficient and on point. And this is what I read, so I will support this.
Thank you.
The only thing that I would add is that, over the years that I've been on this, on this council, we have continually looked for ways to streamline and make ourselves more efficient. We know there is not more money suddenly being generated in places for us to use, and so finding where we can save it is a really important piece. And certainly, when we look at the supply chains and that sort of thing, being able to be nimble enough to take advantage of the best deal, but stay within the requirements of the state law and our own, our own controls is really important. So thank you so much. I know, when you do something like this, when you dig into the, to the, into the depths of this kind of policy and this kind of shift to trend, to a new technology, it is not a simple task. So thank you and your team so much for bringing this forward.
Rule call, please, Alyssa? Bloom?
Yes.
Hyatt?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Duquesne?
Yes.
Kaplan?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Boosh, pass.
Thank you. And now we move on to the first reading of ordinance 3232, adopting the Parks, Trails, and Open Space Map.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Brandon Goldman, Director of Community Development. To my right is Leslie Eldridge, Director of the Parks Department. And tonight, we're going to be discussing the Parks, Trails, and Open Space Plan Map. It is an amendment to our comprehensive plan. Essentially, as the council has presented as a map for an adoption of an official map of the city, these maps reside within our comprehensive plan as technical support documents. This one specifically would be in support of Chapter 8, the Parks, Open Space, and Aesthetics element of the comprehensive plan. I would note that adoption of a plan is what we call a Type III Planning Action. It's a legislative decision by the city council. As part of that process, it was presented to both the Ashland Parks and Recreation Commission and the Planning Commission, and they have provided recommendations that are within your packets, and I believe Leslie will be able to speak on. Essentially, once the city has completed its review process, the decision of the city will be forwarded to the Department of Land Conservation and Development for what's considered a post-acknowledgement plan amendment, or a PAPA. So that's the legalese behind it, but once the Department of Land Conservation and Development has reviewed the map to ensure that it's consistent with state law, it would be the guiding map going forward. And this is an update to a prior map that was initially adopted in 2002, and then had a, called a light update, small modifications in 2012. And with that, I'll turn it over to Leslie.
Thank you, Director Goldman. Just a little bit of background for folks. The Parks, Trails, and Open Space Map is a part of the city's, City of Ashland's comprehensive plan. As Director Goldman said, it serves as a guide for APRC land acquisition and provides for a range of uses that could include neighborhood parks, sports fields, open spaces, trail connectivity, and riparian areas. As was stated before, this plan was first drafted in 1991 and updated in 2002. The map, the 2002 map is currently in the Ashland Comprehensive Plan. The light update in 2012 was completed by the Parks Commissioners, but did not go through the review process and was not updated within the Ashland Comprehensive Plan. Starting in May 2022, the Parks Commission formed the Parks, Trails, and Open Space Map Update Subcommittee, and I just want to acknowledge the members of that Subcommittee: Torsten Heike from the Ashland Woodlands Trails Association, Katie Larson, also from AWTA, Joanne Eckers was a Citizen-at-Large, Eric Hansen, previous to serving as counselor, was representing at-large and mountain bike community, and special thanks to GIS Manager Leah Richards and Administrative Analyst Tara Q. L. for that process. Just a very brief timeline: the APRC Commissioners approved the official map and technical support documents on January 10th, 2024. That went on to be reviewed by the Planning Commission in both a study session and a public hearing, and that was approved on January 23rd, 2024, with an additional recommended whereas clause within the proposed ordinance language that's included in your packet. And here we are today for first reading. So a lot has changed with our parks strategies and open space acquisitions since 1991. If you can believe it, it's hard for me as a relative newcomer to this town, in 1991, Ashland had less parkland per capita than Roseburg, Medford, Klamath Falls, and many other cities within Oregon. After 30 years of concerted effort and a little help from the food and beverage tax, Ashland's per capita parkland is one of the highest in Oregon. One goal in the city's comprehensive plan is to have a neighborhood park located within a quarter mile of every resident inside current city limits. And the commissioners are very proud of the fact that, with a couple of small exceptions, one being the Mistletoe or Croman area, which is also in the nearby proximity to the Croman Mills development site, and Lincoln School, commissioners have deemed that sufficient property has been obtained to largely meet this goal. So if we've met the goal, why do we need a map that shows more, shows more land? Well, the strategies has changed, have changed over time, and no, the Parks, Trails, and Open Space Map does not primarily focus on the creation of discrete parks within the center of town. This update emphasizes protection of significant natural areas, like streams and riparian zones, trail connectivity, and others. It advances the goals and values of Ashland. It advances the idea of livability and making Ashland a good place, a wonderful place to live and visit, providing for alternate transportation connectivity. It advances the goals of conservation and climate, conserving wildlife habitat, riparian protection, fuels management, and of course, recreation. And it promotes the economic development of our town as a great place to be and to experience, and a beautiful, a beautiful town. So this map is the comparison map that was provided to the Planning Commission, and I just want to briefly point out the gold squares. Those are the parcels that are being removed, that are recommended to be removed from the, from the Parks, Trails, and Open Space Map by the commissioners and approved by the Planning Commission. It equals roughly 277 acres of land being recommended to be removed from the plan. And this, this comparison map was included in your packet as well. So lastly, I just want to briefly mention the Ashland Parks and Recreation Commission Trails Master Plan. This was a plan that, after many years of effort, was adopted by 2020, adopted in 2020. It was reviewed and approved by the Planning Commission and the Transportation Commission, and it essentially identifies critical bike and pedestrian corridors in Ashland. It was approved for adoption and inclusion into the Ashland Comprehensive Plan as well, so same process. We wanted to acknowledge this important document within our open space land acquisition plan. So, oops. Here is the Parks, Trails, and Open Space Map, and what I'd like to point out is what is sort of a lavender spider web throughout town, which is referred to in the legend as the Trails Master Plan corridors. Those are the primary connectivity nodes and, and passageways that were identified in the Trails Master Plan. It's the way the Trails Master Plan was, was, was structured. If you look, there's an asterisk, and it's a little hard to see on the slide, but it says, "This map is intended to be used in conjunction with the Trails Master Plan, which identifies critical connectivity corridors for acquisition or easements." I bring this up because I want to acknowledge that there has been some feedback from the Ashland Climate Collaborative, as well as Streets for Everyone, and other folks that, like myself, love bicycles and want to see bikeped trails proliferate throughout this town. And I want to specifically address the Central Bike Path, or CBP, as it's often referred. The Central Bike Path is identified on both the Trails Master Plan and on the Parks, Trails, and Open Space Map, and if I had a pointer, I could show you, but it is essentially the purple swath that goes right through the center of town from the northwest all the way down to the southeast. And so some of that exists and some of it does not, specifically from, as we all know, about Piccadilly and Noble Coffee, the Central Bike Path peters out, and that whole section from the northwest is absent or to be constructed. The other section is down on the southwest side and is development-dependent. So that is part of the Croman Mills Development Plan that is included within their concept design and a requirement of that development. What we have, what both Parks Commissioners and Planning Commission, and now you have heard, is a strong desire from the public to see the Central Bike Path completed and built and prioritized, and there has been requests for it to be prioritized within the Parks, Trails, and Open Space Map. So just a bit of information, which I have learned over these months as I started kind of delving into this. So the Central Bike Path is identified and prioritized as the top priority, actually, within the trans, the existing transportation system plan. That is also part of the Ashland Comprehensive Plan. As I've mentioned, it's also identified within the Trails Master Plan and within our Parks, Trails, and Open Space Map, with the GIS layer I referred to. However, very important to note that the Central Bike Path would fall entirely to Public Works to realize under the Transportation System Plan, as this is urban connectivity that deals primarily with railroad right-of-way and urban easements. So this is, although it's identified within all the priorities that Parks has, has shown within their documents, there are, highlighting it in any more of a, of a way through, through the map, I'm not sure that that would provide much benefit or much meaning to, to the documents. In support of that, the Ashland Parks and Recreation Commissioners, after hearing this feedback, they very much wanted to show their support for the Central Bike Path, and they passed a resolution, which is also in your packet, essentially saying, Parks Commissioners wholly support bimodal transportation. They have, you know, there are bikeped trails that APRC is, does take the lead on, namely TID, Bear Creek Greenway, but the Central Bike Path always has been and will be in the future a Public Works project that APRC is willing to collaborate on as necessary or as appropriate. So that resolution should be in your packet. I think I will stop there. Our staff recommendation is that we approve first reading as, as presented, but as you are aware, Planning Commission did have a recommended whereas clause to include to the proposed ordinance, as well as, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions? Counselor Kaplan?
Yes, thanks, Leslie, for that very clear presentation and a little bit of history. I do want to have a question about the Central Bike Path. You pointed out on the map where it exists, and that about half of it is actually already in place from, as you said, Fourth Street going southeast. I'm curious about that. That portion has been built for some time. Has Parks played any role in acquiring the land for that, or was that all done through some other means by the city? Or maybe Brandon would know this better.
I, no, I do not think that Parks has played any role whatsoever in the Central Bike Path. To quote Public Works Director Scott Flurry, "Everything that has ever been done or ever will be done in the history of the Bike Path will be Public Works."
He's staking his claim. Does, and I guess I'm also...
You know I'm telling the truth, too, because you can tell, Scott.
And I guess it also means that it's not been in the previous, it's not currently in, called out in the current map, Trails and Open Space Map. That is in the comprehensive plan.
Correct. It's in the Trails Master Plan, it's in the Transportation System Plan, it is not on the 2002 Open Space Plan. But through adoption of this plan, by newly incorporating all of those lavender, in that sense, would be, as with other trails, identified on this map in that more broad sense.
Right, good. I think it's helpful, yes, it's, there's a confusing mishmash of different plans and maps and things, so I think for a lot of people looking at it, it's just that, it's confusing. So to understand that it wasn't on the plan, but it's now more highlighted in the plan, and also that it's within Public Works rather than APRC, and that it was built by Public Works, I suppose, acquired by Public Works, all that right-of-way from the railroad, not all of this is next to the railroad, but a lot of it is, you know, going through the cemetery, et cetera, is clarifying, so thank you very much.
Counselor Bloom?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, first, just like to thank both of you for getting back to me on the question I had. I will ask it again for the sake of the public, so excuse me. Essentially, what I'm asking is that by passing this plan, the, the properties that are identified, if they were to become, come up for sale, it does not preclude the council from deciding to purchase those properties for other purposes, such as housing, instead of parks.
Correct. The adoption of this plan does identify that those properties would be well-suited for satisfying the Parks, Trails, and Open Space objectives. However, the property owners still have all the vested rights for their property. They could choose to develop them themselves, they could choose to offer them for sale to the highest bidder. The city could enter into negotiations to purchase one of the properties for whatever use the city found most needed. I would state that that negotiation with the private property owner, under the Parks and Open Space and Aesthetics Chapter of the comp plan, it says explicitly that the city would not use its power of eminent domain to acquire properties in a compulsory manner for Parks purposes. So again, it would be a voluntary transaction between a property owner and the city.
Right, thank you.
I'd like to add just one little tidbit here, is that there's quite a bit of redundancy in the system as well for that very reason. So when you look at every single one of these properties, it doesn't necessarily mean that Parks is desiring to acquire every single one. It's identified a suite of properties that would suit the mission, and should one of them become available on the market and still fulfill the mission of Parks, it would recommend to city council that we would enter into review and acquisition for one of those parcels.
Yeah, just to elaborate on that, just for a second, if you looked at that comparison map and all the orange properties that are no longer included, some of those were developed as housing in the interim.
Right, right. Okay, thank you, and I appreciate you both.
Counselor Dale?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you both. This is clearly long overdue, which is really great that we're tackling this. So just so I could clarify, because I, too, was a little bit confused about the prioritization of the Central Bike Path, is it, would it be appropriate to say, to rephrase, that the, the Trails Master Plan is part of our comprehensive plan, of which the CBP is part of, I think, Chapter 8? So what you're saying by highlighting these corridors is that APRC is affirming its support to the multi-departmental efforts that it would take, especially in the urban areas with easements and so forth, Public Works, clearly, that, that APRC would be a partner to support doing whatever we could to, to initiate and move forward any projects, especially within those corridors, including the Central Bike Path. Is that correct?
I, I think that's right. You know, the attempt is here to provide a comprehensive view of...
So, what you're saying by highlighting these corridors is that APRC is affirming its support to the multi-departmental efforts that it would take, especially in the urban areas with easements and so forth, Public Works, clearly, that APRC would be a partner to support doing whatever we could to initiate and move forward any projects, especially within those corridors, including the Central Bike Path. Is that correct?
I think that's right. You know, the attempt is here to provide a comprehensive view of critical connectivity and to affirm the prioritization of every, of all of the things on this map. There is no ranking that exists either within the Trails Master Plan or within the Parks Trails and Open Space Map. It is identifying the priorities of the system.
Thank you.
Counselor DuKane?
Thank you. And good questions, because, just to follow up with Counselor Dale, so, just to be very clear, I know this is getting redundant here, so that means that when it comes time to what's needed on the Central Bike Path Trail, when it comes to what's needed there, the onus falls on Public Works. Is that correct?
Yes.
I asked that question because, as we all know, so many residents on the south side of town, they have a concern about that area, the lighting, the easement, the cleanup. So, I just wanted to be very clear that that onus falls on Public Works, correct?
I would add that I believe that Parks collaborates in the maintenance of sections of the Central Bike Path and in cleaning and maintenance. Not sexually, I think Parks maintains the north end of the trail and Public Works on the south. We have sort of, we divvy it all up, but in terms of construct, planning, constructing, funding, that is a Public Works authority.
Okay. And something that you mentioned earlier, and just kind of piggybacking on what was said earlier about housing, because Ashland per capita has more parkland than the whole state of Oregon, I would really like to be able to see any purchases go towards workforce housing. Thank you.
Counselor Hansen?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you both very much, and the team, and especially Leah for the beautiful map. But it was a task to cut out that 277 acres of aspiring parkland for the Subcommittee, and I applaud the City of Ashland and the Subcommittee for adapting and changing and refocusing. And I wonder if you could just briefly tell us what you've learned about what might be up in store for Public Works in this community in dealing with the railroads and expanding the public, the Central Bike Path.
Thanks. I've just had some conversations with Public Works Director Scott Flurry, kind of brainstorming, saying, "What is holding the Central Bike Path back?" And I think very obviously, the first one is that although it has been listed as a priority within the TSP for more than a decade, it is not, no money within the CIP has been allocated. Secondly, there is a need for planning and discussions with the railroad. Those railroad right-of-ways can be tricky, complicated, and take some time. So, from what I understand in my discussions with him, those are the hurdles to move past.
Thank you. Yeah, it sounds like, well, knowing it's a high priority for our community, it sounds like we need to get ahead of it with budgetary allocation and communications with the railroad, like, you know, 10 years ago, in order to make something happen in 10 years. But, in the interim, I wonder if you could tell us really quick about APRC's plans for the Bear Creek, because that's something that possibly is a little bit more interesting.
Now you're getting excited. I'll try not to talk too much about that. But Bear Creek Greenway has a regional initiative and, called Invision Bear Creek, as well as a joint powers group, and I've been getting caught up on that. One of APRC's major goals is to continue to connect the Bear Creek Greenway to North Mountain Park and beyond. But one of the things that we're working on right now is, and we did this with Public Works, actually, because at the time, we were very shorthanded and we lost, we had no park superintendent, et cetera, but we put out an RFP for the pedestrian bridge, the Kestrel Park Bridge, that is going to be the next major link in extending the Central Bike, extending the Bear Creek Greenway. So, Parks is also very interested in helping and working with Public Works to connect the Bear Creek Greenway and the Central Bike Path. For those of you that ride it, you know very well that if you're trying to go from one to the other, you're kind of stranded in kind of slightly traffic-y roads, and you're with the cars. And that's another thing that I think that Parks could serve a good role and collaborative role in making those connections to complete the system.
And several of those properties are targeted on this map, which will be a major improvement, both in land conservation, transportation, and wildfire mitigation within our community by adding that.
Yeah, and you can see, again, no relation to the gold color in the comparison map. This is a new legend. The gold color in this map indicates riparian connectivity, where we're looking for conservation value, connectivity, as well as wildlife habitat. Similarly, if you look at the parcels that are down in the bottom left-hand corner, those are primarily large forested areas that could, will provide multiple benefits of not just, not just recreation, but also, again, wildlife habitat, fuels management, forestry management. So, you can really see, just by looking at the map, how the pivot has changed and how those, that foci have changed to these various goals.
Thank you.
Counselor DuKane?
Thank you, Mayor. I had one more quick question. I was looking, and thank you, no fiscal impact happening now. However, it says, "Which will be evaluated and deliberated during the property acquisition review and approval process." When do you feel like you're going to have a property acquisition?
As in any public procurement of property, the process would be for the city to come forward to the council as the decision-making body in this regard to allocate funding for that acquisition. So, it is not a decision that is being made tonight that the city will automatically purchase any of the properties identified on the map. It would be at the time that they're listed for sale, or the city negotiates a purchase and sale agreement, and brings that back to the City Council for review and approval at a public hearing.
Kind of like what you mentioned earlier about purchasing any property that's owned from some, by someone else, correct?
Correct.
The way, just the way that I've experienced per my time at the commission, was that Parks Commissioners become aware of a property that may be on the market that is appropriate. If, if the Parks Commissioners have that funding within their SDCs, System Development charges, or within CIP, and they deem it a priority, they would, you know, meet an executive session, determine whether all the Commissioners are in favor of it, and recommend it to City Council. Then City Council and executive session would consider whether this indeed is a wise choice that, that matches Parks' mission, and then that real estate negotiation would go on from there.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to the public hearing aspect of this, so if we can have staff leave the microphones, we'll call you back up again. But we'll open the public hearing. We have one speaker who has signed up, Gary Schaaf. Three minutes.
Thank you.
Mayor Graham and councilor members, I'm Gary Schaaf, and I'm co-chair of Streets for Everyone, a volunteer team of the Ashland Climate Collaborative. It would appear that it's unanimous, everyone, all the Commissioners, all the testimony that you've included, that's included in your packet, the committees that have weighed in, all agree the Central Bike and Walking Path should be extended. That's obvious. I hope that each of you, as councilors, also agree with that sentiment. Scott Flurry, the Public Works Director, suggested that if funds were available today, the extension would not likely be constructed until 2026 or '27. That extended time reflects the difficulty in working with Oregon and Pacific Railroad. Unfortunately, the city doesn't have money to extend it, even if you wanted to today. The city's reliant upon the Oregon Department of Transportation or the federal government for funds. I'm hoping you will, as a part of tonight's meeting, direct the city's staff to apply for funds, or ask staff to direct the city's grant consultant to do so. The Oregon Department of Transportation has at the present time a historically large sum of money available for local governments to undertake projects that will reduce vehicle miles of travel. We need to make application. The council can improve the chances of that grant success by listing this project, the extension of the Central Bike Path, on this map as a priority, number 19 on the map that I've distributed to you. Also, you should note that the map includes an asterisk, which says that this project is the principal responsibility of the Public Works Department. That seems, to me, as a citizen, to be the principal objective, or the principal objection to including it on the map. The Parks Department seems to believe that this is their map, and it shouldn't include other trails because it's the Parks map. Well, that's not the way Comprehensive Plans work. It's the community's plan. It's our vision as citizens of this community, and I think the record clearly shows that the Central biking and walking path is implicit and a critical element of our future. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Staff, if you would come back up, please? Thank you. Brandon and Leslie, are there any remaining questions? I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Are there any remaining questions of staff? Counselor Hyatt?
Thank you, Mayor. Brandon, quick question. Understanding what would need to happen for us to undertake Central Bike Path continuation. I've learned enough from the Planning Commission to be dangerous, so I want to be real careful. It really isn't just go forth and break ground. It would probably require feasibility study, and a lot of those easements and a lot of that planning would have to come back through that entire process. Is that true?
You know, as, existing on the Transportation System Plan map has a transportation corridor, and I recognize it as recreational land, but vital transportation uses. The Transportation System Plan map, having been approved, then establishes that corridor as a future transportation network. And so, it would be consistent with the Comp Plan if the city were to obtain a grant to acquire the property and move forward with construction. Depending on the section, it may not need to come before the Planning Commission.
Okay.
If it's in O dot right-of-way for, or a...
Railroad right-of-way?
Existing right-of-way. In the case of the Croman Mill area, because that is a master-planned area and private property, the inclusion of it within that area, although on the Transportation System Plan, would be evaluated as part of that master plan to ensure that it's included prior to approval of a development in that area. That said, because it's on the Transportation System Plan, the city could apply for grants to improve that, and potentially use the power of eminent domain. However, and that would not be in conflict with what I mentioned earlier, where if it was being acquired for Parks or recreational purposes, the city's own Comprehensive Plan says that we won't use that compulsory power in order to achieve. So, there is a slight distinction on that.
So, if there's development on a parcel, and that development has to go through the Planning Commission, then by extension, if the CBP's in that parcel, then it, too, would be in front of Planning Commission for review...
Correct.
...acceptance. Before any of that can start, does Public Works need a full feasibility study?
You know, I think before construction of it, they would need a feasibility study. At this point, it's already in the Transportation System Plan, similar to a central boulevard or neighborhood street. Those would be reviewed and approved without full engineering or feasibility study by the Planning Commission. That would usually come prior to the final build-out of the project, but not prior to the approval by Planning Commission or council.
Thank you. Counselor Hansen?
Thank you, Mayor. Brandon, a question for you, in consideration of Mr. Schaaf's testimony. It seems, it seems direct and, well, it seems direct to channel that communication to the Transportation Advisory Committee to really look into funding and check on the process and the TSP, that the Central Bike Path is where it is in there. And I'm curious if that's, if that's anything that you think that we could do from, from these seats tonight, to help move the needle there?
Yeah, I think as Mr. Schaaf indicated, the council has that it's within its discretion to direct staff. So, if you felt that it was valuable to direct staff to look at grant opportunities and ensure that the update of the Transportation System Plan identified the Central Bike Path, you could provide that request to staff.
I forget, you might remember off the top of your head, when is our next TSP?
It's scheduled for 2024.
2024, that's right. Thank you.
Knock on wood.
Any additional questions, Sabrina?
So, recognizing the Central Bike Path is, you know, an interest of both the community and council, and moving that forward, I would propose that, because we have the contract with the grant company, that we can just put that on the radar, that we're looking for multimodal grants and opportunities that would present itself. I think that's, you know, easily done. And also recognizing, as mentioned earlier, that it's not currently on the CIP. That is something that, you know, staff is aware that there is community interest in that, and we can aim at our next biennium to see what it would take to get that on the CIP plan moving forward.
Just a follow-up question to that. Sabrina, can you clarify for me, how does a project get on that list for our grant consultants to look at? Is it just the CIP? Are they primarily looking there?
Yes, so, for Public Works, we've sent them the CIP list to look for grant opportunities for that. So, this obviously isn't currently on the list, so this would just be something we would say, "Hey, we are interested in grants around multimodal transportation, or extending modalities," or anything like that. And so, they can keep an eye out for us on opportunities that might arise, and then we can determine whether or not it's a good investment of staff time to go after that.
Okay. Are there any objections to adding that to the list? All right, sounds good. Okay, if there are no additional questions, the floor is open for a motion. Counselor Hansen?
I think I'm ready to make a motion, Mayor. I move to approve the first reading of Ordinance 3232, in ordinance amending the City of Ashland Comprehensive Plan to adopt the Parks and Open Space Map as an official map in support of the Parks, Open Space, and Aesthetics element of the Ashland Comprehensive Plan, and schedule second reading for March 5, 2024. I also would like to direct staff, Public Works, and the TAC to make sure that the Central Bike Path is a top priority in the TSP, and to request our grant consultant to fast-track CI, grants, as well as directing staff to make sure that the CIP, that the Central Bike Path is in the CIP for the next biennium.
Give me a second. Go ahead. Counselor Hansen, would you care to speak to your motion?
Yeah, I think, from what Leslie and Brandon brought to us today, the map was long overdue. It focuses on new community priorities that APRC has. They are transitioning from land acquisition for a park within every quarter mile of a resident in Ashland. Did that, done that, check, good job. Now, they're looking to expand livability and our preservation of natural spaces, as well as our community commitment to managing our fuels. And this map does that. And I think the broader conversation about the Central Bike Path is a good element to bring up in this room, to underline and make sure that we are on track, to be ahead of those conversations with the, our railroad neighbors, as well as getting money in the budget. So, when we do have the opportunities, we can, we can strike on it. So, thank you for your hard work, both of you, and I'm looking forward to this next chapter.
Counselor Kaplan?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to just echo that. Counselor Hansen made many of the points that I wanted to make as well. I think it's obviously long overdue, and I appreciate particularly the pivot from looking for parkland to really protecting natural, natural corridors and riparian zones, and also looking for opportunities to extend our... also looking for opportunities to extend our recreation and trail networks. Thank you very much.
Counselor Dale?
Thank you. Thank you both for this. This is, again, long overdue, as my colleague said here. The map and the, the technical support documents are just spot-on and exactly in line with what this ordinance is supposed to do. That said, absolutely appreciate the discussion that was, that was raised by the community and staff and, and among this council relative to highlighting the, the bike path, and, and that's very, very important. And so completely and fully support this motion with the added language to, to highlight that and to go look for it. We have a very robust, very strong transportation committee. We've got an excellent Public Works Department that can be all over this. It's, it's complicated, and it takes multiple departments and commissions talking and working with one another. So this is the first step, and go forward. This is great. Thank you. Happy to support.
Counselor Bloom?
Thank you. Yeah, I'm going to support this for sure, but I, I think for me, I identify several properties in this list that I think would be better served for housing. And I would like to, in the future, see the Housing and Human Services Committee come up with their own map to identify properties that could be purchased. I think some of these properties could certainly help us achieve our, our goals with the housing production strategy. And so that's something I'd like to see, but we can take that up with the committee and see if they're interested in that, but I, I think they would be, but I am happy to support this for now.
Counselor Duquesne?
Thank you, Mayor. I wholeheartedly agree with Counselor Bloom. Something that was mentioned before with the number of parks that we have in this small city of Ashland and doing our housing priorities, our plans that we've done with Brandon, I feel it's important to take care of housing first and that parks maintains what they already have. And I will support this. However, I just, I want us to do things smart moving forward.
Roll call, please, Alyssa.
Yes.
Kaplan?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Bloom?
Yes.
Hyatt?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Thank you both so much. We are now at the selection process for city manager. Molly?
I'm here tonight to talk about how you would like to proceed with filling the city manager vacancy. At the January 16 business meeting, it was requested that more information regarding RV cog be brought forth. In the council communication, you can see what I was able to obtain. So RV cog does charge an hourly rate. They most recently worked with the City of Talent, and it was estimated to be about $10,000 for them. That does not include any advertising. So that is strictly, all they do is post the job. They don't do any soliciting. They don't do any phone calls, mailers, stakeholder interviews, anything like that. They strictly just post it on government websites or other websites. And I think the question was asked last time also, that if we were to go out with an RFP, would they apply? And I asked them that question, and they do not, they do not request or participate in RFPs. So that's why that one is in there at the bottom. So that's it.
Questions? Counselor Bloom?
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mayor. So, so let's say we decided to go with RV cog or we decided to have an RFP and do a recruiting firm. What's the timeline look like? Say we were to put this out in the next week or so, a couple of weeks, how long before we start getting some candidates back and looking at interviews?
So RV cog, I will say, would be kind of like what we would do in-house. We would just post the job. We could do that. We would have to probably revamp the job description, which could take a little bit of time, but we could get it posted rather quickly. And then it would depend on how long we would want to post it for. If we do an RFP, we actually, because it's under the threshold, we wouldn't necessarily have to do an RFP. We could just get three quotes and choose a recruiting firm. That could take, if we do an RFP, if you want to go that route, that would be about three months, a three-month process for just the RFP. And then we're looking at several months of the recruiting process up to like four months, which is about how the city attorney recruitment lasted.
Right.
Or we could do the fast-track where we would just get three quotes from a recruiting firm and then start that process. So it'd be a little quicker.
Counselor Dale?
Thank you. Just a quick question. I was just, it just occurs to me, and I'm naive to this, but just looking at this in reverse, would, would a, would a recruiting firm be able to leverage the tools of RV cog, or could we ask them that as part of the, the RFP process?
Meaning?
Meaning, meaning we, we put out an RFP for a recruiting firm.
Mm-hmm.
And as part of that RFP, we say, we would, we would be interested to what extent you would leverage the tools, if any, of RV cog. Does RV cog do that? Would a recruiting firm use that as a potential tool? As part of the overall?
Yeah, I believe the City of Talent used RV cog and a recruiting firm, so they used RV cog for the, the job posting, the interview process, the applicant selection, and then they used a recruiting firm for the advertisement and...
Right, but can the, can the recruiting firm just do it all?
Oh, yes.
Meaning, meaning that the...
They can do all of it.
The city is not bouncing between two of those. We are putting out an RFP for the recruiting firm that says RV cog is a tool that we use. We, we would, as part of your proposal, let us know what that would look like to leverage their services. So they just handle it, including...
Yes, the recruiting firm could handle all of it, yes.
Counselor Duquesne?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Molly. You did your homework. It was correct. And so what I did is I did a little homework also. And I asked the City of Talent, and they did use RV cog, and they also used a hiring firm, agency that was recommended by our previous city manager, I mean, city attorney, Dave Lowman. And so something that I had a question to, looking on January 16, and I looked under fiscal impact, and it says that HR has the funds estimated from $20,000 to $50,000 that it's been budgeted for, for this position?
Well, it's been budgeted for an upper, upper management position.
For an upper management.
Not necessarily this position. We didn't know when we did the budget that we were going to need this position.
Exactly. Okay, because it wasn't clear, and I wanted to make sure, how did we know we needed this money? So when I, I just wanted to be clear on that because RV cog was $10,000, the hiring agency was $5,000. And so that's a total of $15,000. And I also noticed that, working with the hiring firm, RV, the hiring firm did do the advertisement, the solicitation, the mailers, the phone calls, and the recruitment, and RV cog actually managed it and whittled it down to the best candidates and presented it to council and to staff. Is that correct? Was that your, thank you. Thank you. I'll leave it there for now.
Counselor Hyatt?
Thank you, Mayor. Molly, thank you for the background. Listening to the conversation so far, it sounds to me like what council needs to provide is direction on what recruitment services we want to purchase.
Mm-hmm.
So do we want just government advertising, or do we want advertising that includes government and other high-traffic job posting? Do we want input for marketing of the position of all stakeholders, or do we just want to rely on a standard marketing piece or perhaps something that was created recently? And then similarly, do we want candidates to just self-initiate only if the job's just posted? Or do we want candidates to be invited to apply through flyers and outreach and phone calls? And I think once we're able to provide to you what this body, what services this body wants to purchase, it probably would end up in one of those three lanes, either RV cog only, RV cog augmented by outreach with a recruiter, or the full-meal-deal recruiter. Is that sizing it up correctly?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
So I had a quick question.
Counselor Duquesne?
Thank you. And thank you for that, Counselor. So you mentioned three lanes. When I read this, it says, under suggested next steps, would HR be looking for, for the hiring firm and not our city attorney?
Correct.
Because I question, I feel it's important that we have a non-biased process, and it's my experience that it should be not handled by HR at this time.
Could you, can you just clarify when you say it should not be handled?
I don't feel the process of, it's kind of like hiring your boss. And if we are going, depending on which three lanes we decide to go in and give staff direction, I feel is if, in past, the city attorney has hired, looked for, has been more hands-on in the process. And I don't feel like HR should be very hands-on in the process of recruiting the new city manager, whether we do it now, whether we do it later. I feel is if it should not, HR should not be so hands-on in the process.
So maybe a question back to Molly. In the past, it's been my understanding that, that part of the reason to go out for executive level is to, to keep it to where you're not essentially hiring your boss. And that's why we would put out an RFP, and that's what, that's what we've done in the past. Is that correct?
Yes. I believe, yes.
Yes. And so, so then that are, putting out the RFP comes out from HR and city administration because HR is going to have to feed information to the, whoever we select.
Correct.
But the council selects, the council has the final choice in which, which firm it picks. Am I understanding that correctly?
I don't know about the firm it picks, but the candidate.
Candidate.
Right. So because, and because this would be smaller than our new procurement levels, that would be selected. So is that what your concern is about, Counselor Duquesne, is that the HR would select the firm that would then select the, bring us the final candidates?
I would want it to be very clear that, that all of the final candidates would come to council. I understand that HR would send it out, we say, depending on if we wanted to go with RV cog and a firm, however we would go with it, you have to play a part in it. However, I would like to see all candidates come to council, and because I know council does select the final, and that's something that I was talking about with RV cog, they managed the process, and RV cog went through the applicants and brought it to council. And so I would rather see that process of whittling it down, done by RV cog or a hiring agency and not HR.
Right. So I think at the last conversation that this council had, the council said it doesn't want to do it in-house. That, that was the one decision we made, I think, last time was, was it's, what is the outside help we're going to get? I think that that's, that's, that's how I recall it. So maybe if we can come back to the initial questions that, that Counselor Hyatt was so good to put in front of us, that first one being, what are we looking for, something that is beyond just posting on government sites? And maybe let's take up that question because that might narrow down our pathways. So, and, and maybe just kind of go around in, in a couple of circles, and we'll start maybe with Counselor Hyatt. The question being, are, do you think we should only be looking at government sites or should we also go out broader?
I think we should be broader than just government sites, yes. I'll leave it there. Yep.
Personally, I think we're premature doing this. I don't think we should be doing this at all right now. I think that we should be, as I said in the last meeting, I think that we should allow whatever iteration of council exists in the new year, be able to be part of that process and make a determination. I think that we have an interim city manager who's more than capable of continuing to do the job, and yeah, I just, I, I think it's a bit premature, so whatever the body decides, I, it's fine, but...
Counselor Dale?
Thank you. I appreciate that, Counselor. And understanding that, I guess I would, I would add, I would just separate the what from the when, in understanding that, that the timing of it, but just in, in order to give the staff direction that at some point at least, if this council votes or, it's, it's intent to move forward, I am, I am completely for a, the most comprehensive and wide search for an important position, and that's why I asked that they would include RV cog as part of their strategy. But yes, I am interested in a full recruiting firm, whenever that happens to be that we decide.
Yes, Mayor, I'm on the same page with Counselor Dale. I think this is our most important, you know, hiring. In my experience, you know, you want to get specialist expertise in going out and getting the best candidates for you from as broad a search as possible. I wouldn't limit it to the Rogue Valley or to Oregon. There certainly would be, you know, a nationwide search. Specialized recruiting firms have, they, they do many things, but one of the things that they do as well is they are contacted by people who are looking for jobs so they're, so that they can help to channel those, those, those individuals our, our way. They look for, they're, they're matchmakers in a sense. I think that's a really important kind of subtle, you know, resource that we could take advantage of, that I don't think would be provided by RV cog, as I understand it. RV cog simply posts it on the website, and whoever, whoever answers is on, is on the list, and then they help that. And so I'm very much in favor of a broad, comprehensive approach. I think it's an interesting question about the timing. I think, I don't see why it would be a problem starting the process to select the firm, and I'd like to have some more conversation about that, how the firm is actually selected and who's involved in it. It's an interesting conversation we're just starting to get into. But I think we could start it, and I'd want to be advised by the firm on the timing as well, because I think there are a number of things that, you know, are in play, you know, in, in this world. So, so that's my, my input.
Counselor Duquesne?
Thank you. When it comes to timing, I don't see, I agree, I don't see why we couldn't start the process now. I am in the mindset, and I'm in favor of working with a hiring firm and RV cog. It's cost-effective. RV cog has a great reputation for filling positions. They did a great management and took very good care of the City of Talent in concert in working with, in collaboration with the hiring firm that we've used in the past. I think that taking our time, sorting it out, hence starting now, looking for the hiring firm, working with RV cog, I believe that we could find a very successful, I think that this person could be very successful for us working together. That's my take. I would like to do both.
So Counselor Duquesne, in, in this serious question, what is your take in terms of, of a firm that would just go out to government sites versus one that would advertise more broadly?
Well, it's my understanding that when the City of Talent hired the hiring firm, the consultant, they did go out and they did the advertisement and the soliciting and the phone calls. And yes, RV cog did post it on a website. I think that when I look at the amount of money... I think that when I look at the amount of money that would be spent on just having a hiring firm, why not save money and do the broad, reach out and use RV cog and use the hiring firm? So that collaboratively working, we could definitely find a successful person, a position for this. So, I mean, it's whatever the body votes on, but I don't see what, what the hindrance would be working with.
Counselor Hanson?
Thanks, Mayor. I mean, we've talked about the, the what, the when. We know where the where is. But the why is because we're, we're looking to hire a city manager for, for a very special and complex community. And I believe that we want to have all resources deployed to, to find that person. So I'm appreciative of, of the help, the homework, rather, help in this decision. And, and I feel like, yes, we want to hire a recruitment firm. We, we want to do the most comprehensive search we can. And, and that's because this city deserves it.
I think that the other question that we should look at in terms of selecting a path is whether we want a, an outside firm that goes out and recruits or simply waits for people to respond to their announcements. I mean, that's, that's the second question, I think, may help this body get to more specific guidance for staff. So, go ahead and start over here again, too.
Absolutely. I think it's absolutely necessary that we have someone who can leverage their contacts, who creates a flyer. I mean, having seen pieces for folks that are soliciting candidates, myself, those are often what gets your interest. You look at the pretty picture on the front, you're like, well, maybe I will take this phone call because that place looks awesome. So I think there is a lot of value in the outreach. I do not think you leave an executive-level position to candidate-initiated application alone. That may yield your person. But I do absolutely feel that recruiters add value when it comes to seeking out quality candidates that would be a good fit for this community. For me, where the question comes in is, do we want the stakeholder interview piece ahead of all of the marketing? Like, do we want council interviewed and staff interviewed for what are we looking for in a candidate? Do we want that step in the process? But I absolutely want the outreach, without doubt.
Counselor Bloom?
Yeah. I tend to agree. The only, I guess, problem I have with that is, is, again, this conversation about the stakeholders and interviewing us. I mean, five of us not, might not be here in January. So we're making a determination, telling a recruiter what our vision is and what we would like to see out of a city manager. That could be completely different by next year. And I think that that's really risky. So, again, I'm really hung up on the timeline issue. I think that this is something that we should push back till, to summer, maybe, and then kind of begin the process. So that way, a recruiter can kind of start getting everything in the works, and that maybe post-election, going into January, there can be some decisions made by a future council on where to move forward.
Counselor Dale?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I don't have anything to add relative to the what. I think what's been reiterated by this council, I am fully in support of relative to the outreach, relative to the, the type of organization that we would use. I, I, I'm just reminded that, again, going back to the when, this will not be a quick process. We want it to take some time. We want to get it right. We may rearrange the stakeholder interviews, to your point about council, but as far as staff is concerned, we need to have the most informed information coming into it, coming into this body over time. And that includes, what is the recruiter hearing relative to what's out there? What's the talent pool? What, what does our staff think? I, I just think that this isn't going to happen quickly. And so if we just get staff pointed in the right direction with a firm that is capable of outreach, that, that it doesn't bother me with, with starting this, at least just starting the process to get the ball and the logistics in order.
Counselor Kaplan?
Yes, I'm, I'm on the same page. I think we should start getting the ball rolling by identifying a firm. I think we do want, we want a partner. And I think we want a partner in all senses of the, of the word. And to help advise us on the, on exactly where to find the best candidates, and also to advise us on timing. I, I take Counselor Bloom's point. At the same time, there's always one council at a time. There's, you know, so we, we are responsible for moving things forward in the, in a, in orderly way and taking the best decisions that we can. But I absolutely think that it would make sense to have, you know, a partner that could help us to, to gauge the advantages and disadvantages and challenges of that, so.
Counselor Duquesne?
I too am of the mindset that this is not going to be a rushed process. I believe reaching out to recruitment firm, RV cog, I like the idea of working together. RV cog did put together a survey for stakeholders ahead of time. What do you want? What are you looking for? However, when it comes to time, I don't think that waiting is necessarily the right thing to do. Because if we wait until summer, the process could be even longer. And yes, it is an election year. However, if everything does change, there's going to be so many other things happening. So to be able to take care of first things first, take our times, do the reach, do the right thing.
Counselor Hanson?
Yeah, thank you. I guess the only thing I have to add really is just where the recommendation comes from HR and, and staff, you know? I think, I think I'll have a clear picture as things move forward, and I get a sense from staff really where, where they land on this. But I have nothing else to add, really. It's, it's been said a lot, and we're, we're moving forward, and it is going to be a shakeup in January, but I believe, yeah, I'd, I'd like to have those candidates identified. Yeah, just right, right then, ready for us to, to tackle in January.
So now that everyone's had a, a couple of chances to put out what they are thinking about this, the floor is open for a motion. What's that?
I can try.
Counselor Hyatt?
I move to direct staff to create an RFP for a recruitment firm to include a quote that itemizes advertising, stakeholder input and interview for the purpose of that advertising, and then all other functions of the recruitment. I'm going to pull that back because I don't think that reflects what I've been hearing here tonight. I feel like what I've been hearing here this evening is, we just want a straight RFP from a recruitment firm for the creation of a search for the executive officer of this community. So based on that, Molly, I'm going to make it super simple. I move to direct HR to develop an RFP to solicit a recruitment firm for the purpose of hiring the next city manager of Ashland, Oregon.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Counselor Hyatt?
That one was tough because I did hear a lot of good information from this group. And I think it's important that as we go forward to hire this position, that we do have input on timing and what is most appropriate. To get to that point, it will take time if we're going to do stakeholder interviews to understand what is going to be the absolute best fit, not only for the council, but for the team that conducts operations on a daily basis, and for the community whom this person would serve. So it is for that reason that I think the professionals in the recruitment field are best suited to advise us on timing, on advertising, and on how to move forward with this recruitment in the context of the environment we will be hiring in.
Counselor Hanson?
Yep. Thank you, Counselor Hyatt, for rolling that back and doing a more broad motion, which essentially paraphrases the packet. And I, I do think that a lot of discovery will, will come out of this, and having it broader is going to, going to help staff and, and help ultimately help us exactly which direction we want to go. So thank you, and I'm happy to second.
Counselor Kaplan?
Yes, thanks. I, I certainly favor going forward with exploring a recruitment, a recruiting firm, hiring a recruiting firm. I do note that Molly had said that this doesn't need to be a full-blown RFP. It could also be an inquiry to reaching out to a handful of relevant recruiting firms. So I'd like to hear before, I'd, I'd like to hear from staff, do you feel like you have a, a robust handful of recruiting firms that you could reach out to? Or what would be the relative advantage of just posting it as an RFP versus a more limited recruitment, given the relatively small dollar value of this?
And I'm not 100% sure on the RFP process. I, I think it's Oregon buys. Mary, I'm still here? No. That we would post an RFP to. So I believe it's a broader search. Doing our own solicitation, we would just be going off of, you know, finding our own, essentially. I don't know numbers robust. I, I can't answer that. I can research that.
I can amend the motion to be like an RFP or appropriate vehicle for which to establish a contract, if you'd like. I mean, I'm happy to make that motion. And then Molly, that gives you the flexibility with whatever appropriate procurement modality is, is needed.
I think it's under, it's under the limit to require an RFP. An RFP process would take months to do if we do a formal RFP. So we're looking at three months just for that process alone, where if we solicit our own, it would be much faster.
Yeah, and to chime in with the procurement, if it's under, if it's in, if the dollar amount is an intermediate procurement, then you have to get the three bids. So I believe that's probably where you're getting the three.
Yes.
Bid from.
Correct.
If it's over the certain dollar amount, which I think right now is 100.
It's 250, right?
Well, will be, I think.
Will be 250 after second reading.
Right now, it's 100.
Getting ahead of myself.
Then, in that case, we need, we're all, the city's obligated to do the RFP.
So the procurement process, as outlined in ORS and AMC, will drive whatever mechanism you use. So therefore, I amend the motion to leverage the procurement process appropriate for this type of contract. Do you second that?
Second. Which might, that's right. Which might not be an RFP. Yes, thank you. Love it.
Any other comments? Counselor Duquesne, and then Bloom?
I appreciate you amending this. However, I heard the word professionalism a couple of times. And regarding a recruitment firm, I understand this is an important position, and RV cog is professional also. And I don't know what the resistance is to look at the opportunities of working with our government services that are astute in this type of position, along with a recruiting agency, a recruiting firm. So I don't, I don't know what the resistance is. I don't feel comfortable voting for this, supporting this, so I won't be voting yes.
Counselor Bloom?
Thank you, Mayor. I will also not be supporting this motion. I am not comfortable spending potentially tens of thousands of dollars and binding a future council on a decision. Yeah, I'm just not comfortable with it. I, I think that a future council should decide this. I understand the, the comments that Counselor Kaplan made. But, you know, two of you will be here next year, and I just don't feel comfortable binding potentially other people that could be in these seats to a decision that they might not be comfortable with, so.
Counselor Dale?
Thank you. Excuse me. Thank you. I, I heard all of the comments, and I think to, to, just, just so I can speak to Counselor Duquesne's concern, I, I would, I, my feeling is, just so that it's, it's clear from where I'm coming from, is it's absolutely heard and understood. I do not, in, under any circumstances, question the absolute professionalism of RV cog. I, my concern is with the potentially limited outreach and, outreach and methods that they would use, that's clearly listed in what Molly found for us. And I just don't feel that that's enough for what we need for this caliber of position. So that, that was my only concern. I, I have full faith in RV cog. That's why I wanted it to be part of the, the process or a tool that the recruitment firm could use. To the, to the timing aspect, again, I just believe this is going to be a long process, and I don't, I, I think that this, it very well may last into next year. I just think we need to get the logistics and the procedure order in place so that we can move forward towards something that this or the next council could pause, but it, but we, if we do nothing, then we're not being informed, I guess, is what my concern is, which is why I'll support this.
Counselor Kaplan?
Yes, I'll support this as well. I, I believe that this is a first step in a process. I, I don't think it makes sense to defer this step in the process until 11 months. I think there are many steps in the process, and we should take it an orderly step-by-step and decide, you know, how far we want to go. I take Counselor Bloom's point about making sure that we're, you know, respectful of, you know, the people that are in this, these seats next year. But I, I don't think these are contradictions. I think it's, it's, it's premature to, it's premature to stop the bus.
Roll call, please, Alyssa?
Wait, Mayor. Mayor, point of information?
Sure.
You need the amendment first. We didn't vote on the amendment.
You amended your own.
Mm-hmm. So we're okay?
So, and you didn't withdraw it?
No, I didn't.
Okay, fine. We are voting on the amendment.
And, and for clarity, it might be good if you could just clarify the amendment so everyone is on the same page.
With regard to the amendment, it just changes the original motion. Instead of saying, use a request for proposal, an RFP, to use the appropriate procurement process under ORS and AMC.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay. Vote on the amendment. Roll call, please, Alyssa?
Dale?
Yes.
Bloom?
Yes.
Hyatt?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Duquesne?
No.
Kaplan?
Yes.
Yes.
And now we move back to the main motion. Is everyone clear on the main motion?
Yes.
Roll call, please, Alyssa?
Sorry. Kaplan?
Yes.
Duquesne?
No.
Hanson?
Yes.
Hyatt?
Yes.
Bloom?
No.
Dale?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Molly. And we move on to our last order of business this evening, the Resolution 2024-04, Jackson County Multi-Jurisdictional Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan. Kelly?
Hi.
Hi.
Yep. Sabrina, what was the magic you did to make it? Oh, no, it looks great. Okay. I get to see the notes, and you guys get to see the slides. Good evening, Mayor, Council, city staff. I'm Kelly Burns. I'm your emergency.
Sabrina, what was the magic you did to make it? Oh, no, it looks great. Okay, I get to see the notes, and you guys get to see the slides. Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Staff. I'm Kelly Burns. I'm your Emergency Management Coordinator. Tonight, I'm asking Council to approve the Natural Hazard Mitigation Ashland Addendum to the Jackson County Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan. I've got a few slides that detail, like, what it is we're doing, why we're doing it. I've got some history on it, and I have received some questions and comments and concerns from some of you about it, and I hope to be able to address those fully, and so that we can step towards adoption. Your Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan, or as commonly referred to as the NHMP, you'll find that a lot of these high-level plans have these acronyms to them, and so sometimes they feel new. But this one's been around for a little while, especially in Jackson County and with Ashland specific. Its purpose is, when we have an updated and adopted NHMP, it allows Ashland to qualify for, to apply for, and to receive funding opportunities to mitigate our natural hazards that we are at risk for pre and post-disaster. And some of that will clarify as to what that means. So, the Council action proposed tonight is to adopt Ashland's addendum to the Greater Jackson County Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan.
So, Kelly, as we go, do you want questions as we go, or do you want us to hold them?
This one's quick, or at least it should be fairly quick. It won't take more than, like, three to four minutes to get all the way through it, and then, yeah, and then we can go for it.
Okay, great.
As your emergency manager, part of my job is to work on our emergency planning. And so, the Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan is part of my emergency management cycle, my planning cycle, and it just points directly to mitigation. So, the Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan is all about mitigation. We do have a lot of other priorities that protect life and property, which includes our evacuations, but those are more towards response. And so, we are working on those and other aspects and things. We'll keep moving. Timeline, this process was begun in Jackson County and with Ashland back in October of 2022. When I took on the role of Emergency Management Coordinator, I got involved in April of 2023, and that's with certain stakeholders, which did include some of our Public Works folks. But Chris Chambers, who's been with our wildfire division for years and has helped with these plans, he kind of helped guide me along to make sure we were going there. So, we did some reviewing and revisioning of it. Specifically, the old plan was 2018, and one of the most significant changes in the updated plan is that in 2018's plan, the Cascadia event was fresh in everybody's minds. Like, we did have a lot of wildfires that were coming up through Northern California, and we were having, we had the Oak Knoll Fire, that was only a few years before that. But fire wasn't necessarily on the highest priority. This updated version, fire is number one for us, because that does represent our greatest risk around here. And Cascadia's gone down a little bit, but not much. We're still concerned about that, because the impacts of the Cascadia will affect us. But fire's number one. We did a capabilities assessment throughout the city, through Public Works, to identify floodplain managers and make sure that those were all updated. And now, we're at the APA, which is Approval Pending Adoption, more acronyms for us to be comfortable with, from FEMA and our own local adoption of our portion, our addendum to the NHMP. That's where we are right now, today, at February 20th. What does it mean when you adopt this? It means that the city can qualify for and apply for and receive federal funds for ongoing pre and post-disaster mitigation funds. It also means that once we adopt it, it's our plan. So, if we want to update it or change pieces of it, of the plan, if there's pieces that are imperfect, it doesn't hamstring us from receiving those funds. It's ours, so we get to update it and change it as we see fit. And that will be part of my role as your Emergency Management Coordinator, to make sure that we convene the proper stakeholders and the proper groups, so that we can get the plan more in line with what we want. Finally, when we support it, we're in step with our other communities in the Rogue Valley and our community needs, current communities that have already adopted their updated addendums, our talent, Phoenix, Jackson County, just to name a few. And so, they're waiting for us to take this adoption step, and then we can work on it further. Now, I'm ready for your questions.
Questions? Counselor Dale.
Kelly, thank you. I appreciate this. This is clearly long overdue. So, thanks for jumping into this and getting in there. Let me kind of just put you on the spot. I'll ask you a couple of questions, if you don't mind. In your own opinion, how comprehensive and robust and ready for prime time do you think this plan is in its current state?
I think the plan is imperfect.
Okay.
But I think its main process, its main function, is to allow us to continue to qualify for FEMA funds for pre and post mitigation. Some of the benefits that we have with the previous version, that was used to obtain natural hazard mitigation pre and post disasters, we've got the $3 million grant from FEMA for fuels reduction and home hardening. That's been pushed and worked with by Chris Chambers. The fire department also benefited from having this active plan, this imperfect active plan for us, with the NFPA 1582 health testing that they were able to do post the Alameda fires, and the new SCBA's, which was a third of a million dollars, because we were able to satisfy the requirements of those grants by having an adopted addendum to it.
May I have a follow-up, please? So, thank you. So, if I'm hearing you correctly, and I appreciate that, that it's number one up there, and what you said, its prime purpose is to obtain funding. Understand that.
So, that we can continue. Yes, sir.
So, we continue. It's true. But it's so, and I know you would agree that it's so much more than that, right? I mean, this is the document for which you, I assume, or one of a few very, very critical documents for the emergency management and the safety of this city, which you're in charge of, and we appreciate that. What I'm worried about, because I found it to be incomplete, and I mean, and that's okay. It's a work in progress. But it, like, for instance, under critical and essential infrastructure, this is just me, the airport was missing. I mean, there was just kind of gaping holes and different things. So, how would you, what would you see the timeline being of really dialing this in? If we approve this to be able to move forward with the funding, what would we see, and when would we see it, as far as really seeing what you come back with, with other stakeholders? The steering committee was just five members of the fire department, which is wonderful, all outstanding human beings. But there was, I didn't see a lot of cross-departmental stakeholder collaboration with this particular iteration. How would you address that?
Correct, yeah. So, the work didn't necessarily happen in a silo, like, we did involve, like, other members of our Public Works, because they have the most information about, like, our floods and things like that. However, that said, let me address, like, the gaps and the holes in it. Adoption of this plan is just one step in the process of making the plan better. It doesn't, again, it doesn't hamstring us if it didn't include the airport. So, what would the process be like? Per the tenets of the plan, once it's adopted, then our job is to come back to the steering committee, and per recommendation, I think we should expand the steering committee somewhat to include some of our other stakeholders, especially with our Public Works, to say, what are the pieces we need to change? How soon could we make those changes? I've got a good list from the mayor of things that should be updated on that, and it won't take long to do that. It is all up to us and the staff hours required, plus the folks that would like to be more involved in the process. You know, just thinking of the steering committee, too, it is important that the steering committee isn't, you know, like, a full community-based thing, like, that would bog down the process. So, you know, another handful of folks into it, maybe five to 10, that are part of our working group in the city, and then a broader scope of, like, hey, here's some pieces that we need to fill in. How fast could that be done? Well, you direct me, and I'll do it.
So, I had a couple of questions. One of them is that, in my experience with these planning processes, specifically with FEMA's Hazard Mitigation Planning Process, that in addition to it being what allows us to request funding for projects, it's also our time to think. And one of the things that I noticed in here is that two of these hazards weren't on the plan last time. They weren't identified last time, because, as you mentioned, things are changing so quickly, and it is air quality related to wildfire smoke and its extreme heat. Until this planning process, we didn't understand it wasn't a problem that it is now. So, we're seeing these escalating issues coming. But I don't recall, in the four years that I was on the council before, ever seeing an amendment to our appendix, our plan, which sits in the appendix of the county's plan. So, how do you envision that working, if the council were to accept this tonight? Because generally, what happens, unfortunately, in too many places, is this is the key to the door for money, and people stamp it. They update it a little bit, and I'm not saying that that's what we've done here. But this is a very fast-moving and accelerating threat risks, sort of shift. What could this council expect in terms of, or what's appropriate for us, in terms of how often to look back at this plan once, say, these changes happen, to make it more comprehensive? What's appropriate for us to be expecting?
What's appropriate for us to be expecting? Well, I think the plan needs to be more comprehensive, to allow for the extreme heat events that we are seeing. There is mention of it in the current addendum, but, you know, to say that it's adequate, it's not adequate. And if we can vet those things out and find the way to, like, describe those and say, this is going to be our focus, then, as it relates to a natural hazard mitigation plan, then as long as it's in there, then when we do go to qualify for FEMA funds, like, we've already got the plan adopted. Like, again, that's the piece that FEMA is wanting from us. The plan is ours to redefine, to redraw. Like, we have full authority to work with that. I think some of the other piece, too, is that some of these things, like, when we talk about air quality, right? You mentioned air quality. That is more contained in our CRP, our Community Response Plan, because that's a separate but supporting plan, that those issues can be vetted and drawn out further. So, the Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan is a more high-level look at our natural hazards, and, yes, assuredly, like, we need to develop it more.
And so, we could, I could envision that our plan, once it's revised, could reflect back and point back. I saw that it points back in some places.
Yes.
And says, you'll find this over in this other place. Our Community Wildfire Protection Plan is being updated. That has a lot of the comments that I think I made to you around urban ignitability, addressing that. And so, I think that is one of the ways that it could be made to be more comprehensive, so we know where these things sit, if they don't necessarily sit right in this plan. Counselor Kaplan?
Yes, thanks, Mayor, and thanks, Kelly. I did, shared some questions before. And I recognize that a lot of these different planning exercises are overlapping and nested and do different things.
They support each other. They're supposed to.
They support each other. And there's also a danger of overplanning, in some sense, and spending so much time planning that, you know, the work doesn't get done. So, I'm really kind of laser-focused on just one aspect of it, I have to say, which is one of the, there are a dozen and a half actions that are called out, and just, I'm very focused on the issue of evacuation and preparing for fire season. So, I'm just really wondering why item, action number 10.4, which says, provide responder training and public education offerings related to wildfire evacuations, seems to me that that should be highlighted in yellow with the other priority actions.
Should be right at the top.
Should be, well, should be pretty far up there, particularly as we've emphasized many times. You know, we've talked about the evacuation time estimate that was done three years ago, and there's pinch points that need to get worked out in order to make the evacuation possibilities more fluid, more rapid. We actually, in our retreat last year, also talked about that, because I think we're all concerned. And I think the community is concerned about what are we doing to make sure that this fire season, we're really ready. So, I'm interested in, I'm asking whether that could be one specific change on this before adoption, and then, more importantly, whether we could have, if the council wishes, a presentation from you and others in the very near future in a study session, on what is our status of preparation for wildfire, including evacuation planning. We talked about a whole bunch of things last year that I just want to make sure don't get, and I know they haven't fallen off the, I know they haven't fallen off your plate. You're focused on it. But the fact that you're focused on it, other people need to know that you're focused on it and get some sense of comfort from that, and figure out where we can participate. We, as the community, can participate.
Absolutely.
I said a lot, but I hope that's.
No, it's all good points, like evacuations and everybody getting out alive is, like, should be on everybody's mind, right? So, some of the crossover between the Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan and the Community Wildfire Protection Plan is that response piece, where natural hazard mitigation is supposed to just be focused on some of the mitigation. And yet, we can layer some discussion about evacuation preparedness and, you know, getting responders ready for that. Where it should be housed is going to be in the Community Wildfire Protection Plan. So, in conversation with Chris Chambers, who's heading up that process, is we've talked about combining efforts, hopefully post-adoption of tonight's NHMP, combining efforts of the CWPP with the updates that are going to be required for the NHMP. So, I just know that, like, that effort of getting us ready for evacuations, making sure that people have access to the information, and then we can practice those things like that, is on the forefront of my mind and, you know, on all of our minds. And that's just going to be the ongoing work we need to do. I am trying to aim you towards the most important part of this tonight, which is to adopt it, and then we can work to fix the pieces that feel like gaps.
Counselor Hanson.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Kelly. Yeah, it sounds like we need to adopt this so Jackson County can move forward.
Correct.
So, all of us can move forward with Jackson County. But to the mayor's point, how often do we revisit this? I think it would be proactive of this community to have regular check-ins with this group of, you know, director kind of level.
Like, steering committee and stakeholders, like, being able to share ideas and things.
And then, my question is actually, you know, with this feedback, in this loop between the community, if it's just the council and this group, who actually goes for the funds to help us? Because as we're identifying different things in our addendum and we're going for funds, who is that? Is that?
Yeah, who's writing those? In previous grants that we've received, it's been the wildfire division of the fire department. They've allowed to have staff hours for that kind of study. And I know that we've acquired a grant consulting company, though with being a shop of one in the emergency management, I want to meet those people, because there are a lot of opportunities for that.
There's millions of dollars available.
I think one of the things which maybe I didn't answer fully, and I apologize for that, is the plan only requires us to look at the NHMP annually. But I think Mayor Graham was like, why aren't we meeting quarterly on this? Like, this is important, and I totally agree. Like, there's no reason why we can't convene to get this thing in line sooner than later.
Great. And it sounds like multi-interagency departmental grant opportunities. It's not just one.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's great. But this, I think this body, I'm hearing that this body, we're all very interested.
Me, too.
Yeah, to help. So, thank you for this.
Counselor Duquesne?
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, Kelly. Just to kind of follow up on what was mentioned earlier Counselor Kaplan brought up, as we are approaching fire season, and we did talk about this at our last retreat, and what I hear is, when are we going to see this again? I am in favor of moving this forward so that we can be funded. However, I am also wanting to put a date, a time, a month, when we can discuss evacuation, because that's going to be on the forefront of everybody's mind. We had, that's another portion I don't need to discuss right now. However, it's already becoming a topic.
Yeah, for sure.
And so, I don't know how we feel about it, but I would love to see this on a study session, so that we can start to say, this is, I know we have our numbers, and what area are you in, but then where do you go? And we never know where this disaster is going to come from, God forbid. So, I believe that it's important that we look at putting it on a study session. If we could get, I don't know, what would be comfortable, a month or two months, or?
Yeah, how about a month?
Well, we can certainly talk about that. I think that the evacuation piece, as Kelly mentioned, is a separate. It's a response, emergency response element. There may be some infrastructure related to that, but that can be taken up in this venue. But I think it makes sense, and it looks like there's a lot of agreement that we should have a study session specific to evacuation in the spring, sometime, at some point before fire season, and with people still having some time to prepare. So, I think that sounds fantastic. Counselor Hyatt, I know you had another question?
I think it was answered in the exchange.
I think it was answered in the exchange with Counselor Hanson, but just to put a fine tip on it, the packet indicates that this is a condition for pre and post-disaster mitigation grants and funds from FEMA. If we delay or fail to adopt, it impacts that funding for just Ashland, or it impacts that funding for Ashland and all other contributors?
My understanding would be it impacts our funding.
Our funding. Understood. I just wanted the clarity. Thank you.
Counselor Dale?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of quick questions. Kelly, how long do you think it would take you to, to, if we, if we adopted this tonight, when do you think you would have it whipped up?
All finished?
Yeah.
Like, quarter? For an A-plus grade?
We'll go, we'll go an A-minus. I mean, let's, it's not getting silly.
A minus might be acceptable. Why don't we say a term of six months?
Six months?
And then in between that time, we'll meet as much as we need with, with the current steering committee, with an expanded steering committee. But I, I would like to see this, I would like to see each of you that had concerns about it, like, wow, it seems like there's some gaps here, just so you can be assured that it's handled. You know, it's stunning to me that five of you might not be here within the next year. Okay.
That's how we feel.
So, so one thing I wonder about that timing, Kelly, I know one of the best possibilities for us to get funding, significant funding, to move forward on these, these elements is the BRIC program at FEMA.
Yes.
And that, the, just to qualify for that, we have to apply to the state and, and move through the state process. And that happens far earlier than FEMA's deadline. So that happens typically in the fall. If we're going after some big funding, there, I would imagine there might be some elements that we have to put in place in order to apply for that. So would it be possible to, to get these, these, these gaps that we've identified filled in four months so that we could have priorities? One of the things that I, I'm looking at here, and it was similar to Counselor Kaplan, is that some of these are highlighted as more important than the other things on the list. And I would like the council to understand those elements and to, you know, sort of stamp it and say, this is what we're after, so that then you and, and the other folks at the city can look at those really high-priority ones and figure out from there what is the most important thing to go after funding for. So is, is four months pushing it too hard?
Well, Mayor, would you be saying that, like, that's what we would do in a study session then, to talk about, like, hey, here's, here's the details of the plan, here's our highest priorities, and then we could set what our, what we would pursue funding actions for?
Yeah, yeah. To fill in, I think, I think different folks have told you about some gaps that we, we see. And certainly, for instance, again, I know that the Community Wildfire Protection Plan is being redeveloped. I've, I've talked to Chris Chambers. I know a significant amount of that is home hardening and, and ignitability issues.
Yes.
But we don't really talk at all in this process about it. And so what, the kind of changes that I would like to see are things that say, you know, one goal around ignitability, refer back to the CWPP. That, that's, those are the specific details we're going to do. So that we could, somebody could kind of see how things nest in this process. So anything that's missing, that, and I see some that say, we'll, we'll continue to study. So I'm hoping that we would have something under those that is at least a goal, at least an action. Maybe even it's an action we're already taking, because we're already responding to a lot of these things. But
Correct.
That type of kind of closing the gaps, how long would that take to come back in and say, the gaps are closed, and here's what the priorities look like? And, and if you can, this is the order we think we should go after these.
I'd probably need more time to kind of give you a timeline for that. But I just know, like, if, if we want to get this done before fire season begins, like, I know we can do it. Like, we can dedicate the time and hours to it.
Okay. That, that's, that's the, more of the timeline that I think I would like to see. And then the council can, we can set up a way to track it. We can, the council can decide, how often do we want to hear back on what kind of progress we're making on this? Because these, these plans are the things that, that take us off the path of these disasters being catastrophic.
Yeah.
And the difficulty of them, and, and Kelly, you'll have experienced this with your fellow emergency managers, is the really big disasters, and we saw that here in town, are the ones that human beings have the hardest time appropriating funding towards, because they're also typically the lowest likelihood. And so it seems to me that this is an opportunity, that FEMA makes us do it, but it's an opportunity for us to think about how we want to prioritize the different elements that we see as being really existential threats to this community. So that's what I am hoping, is that however the city, however the council goes forward tonight, that we will ask staff to come back with, with those details in a, in a relatively short period of time. Any other questions?
I'm ready to make a motion, Mayor.
Before, before I open that up, actually, I'll do that after. The floor is open for a motion. Counselor Dale?
All right. I move to approve Resolution 2024-04, adopting the City of Ashland's representation in the updates to the Jackson County Multi-Jurisdictional Natural Hazards Mitigation Plan, with the stipulation that an updated version be presented to council in four months. That includes recommendations from a steering committee that consists of multiple city department stakeholders.
I'll second that.
Okay. Counselor Dale?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I, I appreciate the six months, but I was just, I think it's the, I, I believe it's a priority of this council, especially, you know, four months gets us right to June, and that's even a little too close to comfort for fire season. I was going to go for three, but I thought we'll just, but, but I also want to, want you to know that I understand that, just like we had a discussion an hour and a half ago relative to a parks plan, that there, there are plans that attach to plans and link and point to other plans. I get it. So it, it, we have to be careful not to look at one particular document in a vacuum. But at the same time, we need to show priority for it. So I, I would, I would love to have you come back, present what we've got. We'll approve it, if the council approves it tonight, that that gets that ball rolling for you, because that's important for us. But it is, it is important to, to see what, we, we need to upgrade this document and, and need to make it a priority. And, and I would love as part of that presentation, or in another study session, is for you to maybe show how the different documents and the wildfire plan link together for the benefit of us and for the citizens, so they can see all the good work that you're doing. Thank you.
Counselor?
Yeah, thank you. I, yeah, it's really, I think it's really critical that we get this passed now. But I am looking forward to this process moving, you know, going forward, and, and everybody kind of coming together. And, and especially what could come out of this is something that the community as a whole can kind of really wrap their heads around and understand and is clear. Because I, you know, not everybody wants to read hundreds of pages of plans. That's, that's what we do, right? So something that's a little bit more simplified for the public. I look forward to something like that as well. So thank you.
Any other discussion? I just wanted to say, to point out that we are in a really important time, having an emergency coordinator. And I call you our emergency manager. Having that specifically as a position is a huge, is a huge deal, because when it's not, when it's shared, these kind of conversations get missed.
Yes.
When it's, when it's someone's additional duties as assigned, it tends to be a difficult conversation to bring to the front. But it also means that there's a transition of coming in, of Kelly coming into a space that didn't have anybody doing these roles before. And so we're all getting used to, what does that look like? What is the council's relationship with its emergency management and with its hazard mitigation and all of that? And I think it was a critically important step to get this position, and I'm so glad that Kelly is in it, with all the experience that you have over this so many years here in Ashland, and understanding this community. And I think we are, we are lining up for a really important discussion and plan-making, that we can then come back up and, for our community, say, these are the things we're going after, these are the things that are most important. Because if there is one thing that I get asked the most about, it's about disasters and emergencies. And as we get closer to wildfire season, those conversations in the grocery store are going to go higher and higher and more insistent.
Yes.
And so being able to, to, for us to know what the plan is, and to be able to track it and see what's, what's coming from it, is really because you're able to put your time into that and stay focused on it while everybody else is focused on their jobs. And so thank you so much for the work that you've put into this and the work that you will continue to put into it. And we will look forward to continuing to stay engaged. I, I'm, I'm glad that this council is looking like it will be more engaged in this, in the, in going forward than we have been in the past. Any other discussion? Roll call, please. Alyssa?
Dale?
Yes.
Kaplan?
Yes.
Duquesne?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Hyatt?
Yes.
Bloom?
Yes.
Motion pass. Great. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Now the work begins.
And now we have other business from council members, report from council, reports from council liaisons. Any reports for the good of the order? Okay. Great. All right. Well, with that, the floor is open for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.